Doing tonight, good?
Yeah. Doing fine.
Please. Welcome back. Really?
No, I'll mention it to one.
Thanks. Good evening, BM 702, I guess. I called to order the meeting and would you please join me in a pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, just a notification that this is being broadcast live by Chancery Telemedia. Is there anybody else in the room that's broadcasting? Thank you. Okay. Okay, public service announcements. We have to sign the warrant for the state primary election. Which we plan...
All you need is a motion to...
Right, I was gonna say that. We've signed it, we just need a motion.
...by the September 8th state primary election.
I'll make a motion that we post a warrant for the 2016 state primary election to be held on September 8th from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five to nothing. Committee vacancies.
We're gonna open session after that?
Yep, yeah, that's the way it is here.
Okay, committee vacancies as of today. There's one vacancy on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, one vacancy on the Civic Committee, many vacancies on the Cultural Council, it can have up to 21 members, two vacancies on the Economic Development Commission, one vacancy on Historic Commission, one vacancy on the IT Capital Advisory Committee, three vacancies on the Energy Conservation Committee, two vacancies on the Public Celebrations Committee, one vacancy on the Recycling Committee, one vacancy on the Sign Advisory Committee, and three vacancies on the Tree Committee. If you're interested in serving on any of these committees, please fill out an application either online on the town's website or in person at the town manager's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Open session. Anybody like to speak? Anybody like to get up and speak on the open session? Nobody wants to speak? Okay, we'll go to public hearings. Go to continuance, change of corporation, change of owner, change of manager, transfer of stock, and pledge of license from Harrington Wine and Liquors, DBA Harrington Wine and Liquors to Lincoln Liquors, 10 Summer Street.
Good evening.
Excuse me, Paul, do I need to make a statement at this point?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I have watched the video from the previous session, so I am prepared to vote this evening.
Does anybody have an objection to this? Okay, thank you.
I don't really have much to add from last session, other than that I did speak to Sharon at the office and the glitch with the missing pages was a clerical error at the selectman's office, and you should have all those missing pages now.
Anybody have anything to say to Joan?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
At the last meeting you had said, you know, everybody was so concerned about the train set. Have you thought about possibly donating to a charity that might make it available?
I thought that's what I did say last time.
Oh, okay.
That that is what we're going to do. And the decision on where it will go depends on who's prepared to display it for the most amount of time.
You have to have a certain amount of space.
Right.
And the expertise to put it together would have to be probably some farmer employees that could probably be paid for their services.
Well, we haven't even come to that bridge yet.
No, I know, I know, I know.
Just wanted to get a clarification following up, but Bob said that donation will be to a Chelmsford organization of one type or another.
Oh, yes, we'd definitely like to keep it in town.
Thank you. Being a public hearing, does anybody in the audience have anything to say to what we have spoken about?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five to nothing.
Good luck.
That was just to close.
Oh, I'm sorry. The motion to give the license.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the change of manager, new officer, and pledge of license, transfer of stock, and change of DBA for an all alcohol package store license from Harrington Wine and Liquor, DBA Harrington Wine and Liquors to be exercised on the premises at 10 Summer Street, Chelmsford.
Can we add to that who the new owner is? Because I noticed that wasn't in there when I looked at it this afternoon.
Okay, new owner being Lincoln Liquors?
Well, actually, it's a stock transfer.
Receiving the stock. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, nothing.
Now, good luck.
Thank you. Okay, now we have a continuance of the beer and wine package store license from Chelmsford Premium Meats, 120 Chelmsford Street. Tony Housler?
Laura's gonna make the same disclosure.
Okay, I watched the video from the previous hearing and I am prepared to vote on this this evening. Thank you.
And we thank you for doing so. Mr. Chairman, for the record, Douglas Houser from Lampert House on Robyn, representing the applicant, BM Carpenter LLC. If I may have your permission, I'd like to submit two sets of documents for your review this evening.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you. There only one here? Get the freshman? You get the freshman?
Thank you.
What I submitted to you was a letter that I drafted today and some documents that are ads for other butcher stores that actually sell beer and wine and have licenses similar to what the applicant's seeking. I provide you evidence that, without going outside the Merrimack Valley, I just figured, why not just keep it local? We had conquered Northand over, Hayrow, Tuxbury, Lowell, and I'll say Arlington, which is on the border of the Merrimack Valley. All of those have stores, and that's why these documents are supportive of, butcher stores where beer and wine are sold as an ancillary or corollary product to the fine meats that are otherwise offered in those stores. And the reason I did that is, you know, people get concerned about, you know, is this kind of going off a new direction or new trail? And I'm saying, no, it's not. And I think that's significant evidence that this is a type of, our applicant, the applicant before you, is a business that is similar to each of these stores that I've provided to you, and just looking to do the same thing, that it's now becoming somewhat industry-wide. So this is not an anomaly, this is actually consistent with business practices in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. These stores have all had licenses, so that means the ABCC has also approved of them as well. So I want to kind of generally take care of any reservations that any of you may have about the fact that this particular type of store is appropriate for selling these kinds of products. They are, and it's statewide, obviously. The other reason I gave you a letter was to not only document that particular issue, but I also wanted to, you know, people always get concerned about, well, what happens if you allow it here? Will, you know, we're opening up Pandora's Box? And my suggestion to you is there's no way that could be happening, at least as to Chelmsford, and that's all I really, all you should care about and all I care about in context with this application. I took a look and I literally examined businesses located from the current Harrington Wine and Liquors all the way down to the Westlands Package Store and even beyond, it went all the way down to Alpine Butcher and Lowell. And along that entire stretch, which is about two miles, 2.2 miles in total, I did an analysis of every type of business that's located in there and what's likely to come before this board if ever there was going to be someone looking to try to get a beer and wine license. And then, so I just took a look and I hear the list of stores, 95% of them or more just would never, they'd never come before the board because they wouldn't even think about trying to sell beer or wine. Jewelry stores, hair and nail salons, counting legal dental and medical practices, banks, drugstores, existing restaurants, because they're already serving for consumption there, dry cleaners, florists, gifts and card shops, real estate brokerage firms, appliance repair centers, and financial investment firms. And what I've said to you is none of these businesses would seek a license because beer and wine are unrelated to the services and products being offered. So if you could think about that entire stretch of distance, what other potential businesses coming in asking, could potentially ask this board for that kind of a license to put the board on, you know, a concern that somebody else is gonna open up Pandora's Box? There isn't. Just factually, it just isn't gonna happen. So that means, what are the exceptions to that list that I just gave you? I limited them from what I could see, and I'm open to correction, I have no problem with that. Gas stations, I considered Mobile, Sunoco, Shell, and the one at the corner of Acton in Central Square, I don't know what brand that is. And then the convenience store in Village Square, which is next to the Zesties Pizza. Those are the four particular locations that on the outside possible could ever come before this board asking for a beer or wine license. And I've identified at least four or five reasons here in this memo why that just, it's like trying to compare apples to oranges. They're nowhere close to what's being offered here by the applicant, which is a very limited product with a family-oriented business, not open just in the sense of the general public isn't walking in and out of there, you know, with all wide-ranging ages. This is a very focused, customer-based business, family-operated, not with teenagers working at point-of-sale registers. So there's very little chance in the operation that's being submitted here by the applicant, there's no chance actually, realistically, that anyone other but a family member or an adult who's been an employee for a long time at this company is gonna be the one checking for, you know, potential illegal sales to younger people. The only other exceptions to that, or, and the other reasons why, I don't think there's any kind of what I call precedential value or anything like that, why if you vote for this application, why it can't be compared to anybody else that comes in. The most important one, and I'll highlight it again, the town's police chief has never in the past voiced a support for an application like this, he does here. And I think that speaks volume. He is the voice of your chief public safety enforcement, and he finds no issues with this applicant before this board. And I'm sure the chief is very mindful of what are the other potential applicants that could ever come down the road, and I think they're all, they're all gonna be separated factually and from what they do. There are no other applicants within that Route 110 corridor, or even in the Drum Hill area, that would be able to demonstrate public need like we've been able to demonstrate here. There's a big distance here. People like Hannaford, or people like Stop and Shop, Market Basket, those kind of superstore, even Walmart, those stores, Hannaford and Walmart would automatically probably be disqualified because they are literally one-tenth of a mile from Drum Hill Liquors. The public need, you could walk across the street. So that is factually distinct from, compared to here, we have .8 miles and .6 miles between each location, substantial difference in the distance. Similarly with Hannaford, with Stop and Shop, and with Market Basket, they'd have the same problem trying to ask for a beer or wine license because Alpine Butcher, which is literally less than a quarter of a mile towards Lowell, is right there, they serve, they have the license for beer and wine. And the Westlands Package Store, a quarter mile to the other direction, also has a full range of product. Again, within a quarter of a mile of walking distance, basically, those opportunities are available. So they would never meet public need. I think it's asking a lot more when people are gonna be walking a half a mile just to go pick up some, something corollary to their meats. I want to go further with the issue of why the application should be granted. I was told as of about 4 o'clock, there had not been any letters in opposition. I don't know if one came in since then, but as far as I'm aware, we have not gotten a single statement against this approach, our application, from a single person in this town, or from any board or community, you know, leadership. Everybody's been supportive of it. I've had discussions with former selectmen that have said, you know, they thought we made a very strong presentation last time, and I appreciated the fact that they sent me emails to comment on that. But more importantly about this applicant, you've got a person with significant business experience, and who's a family-run business, and they're committed to this town, and I think they warrant your support. I'm not aware, Paul, if any letters have come in in opposition?
Not to my knowledge.
You don't get them all?
Right, all I get is what has come to the office.
It has been one negative.
One negative. I hadn't been aware of that, so that's, I'd be curious. There was one originally that was a somewhat negative, and that was from Phyllis Gervais of Drum Hill Liquors. But she, I had a discussion with Phyllis after she initially authored her first letter, and we spoke at some length, and I've known Phyllis for years, and she retracted it. She understood the argument about Hannaford and why it would not be appropriate for them to ever get a license, and she saw very quickly how factually distinguishable those situations were. And she, I believe, has sent a separate letter saying she's changed her mind, and I appreciate her for doing that, for going on record. She showed an open mind, and I appreciate it. And most importantly, you know, the last time we were here, someone out of the audience, unknown to us, unsolicited to us, just someone who happened to be here, was a young woman, came up and spoke and saying, boy, it would be nice to be able to get one-stop shopping and pick up a bottle of wine or, you know, a particular type of beer, because with all these home breweries, those are the kind of things we're looking at. We're not looking to ever try to substitute, nor could we ever try to substitute for something like Harrington's Wine and Liquors or Westlands. Not even trying to. This is just a matter of convenience, and she made it clear, that's a public need, she would appreciate it. Again, with the police chief's support of this, and I'm not aware of any other significant opposition, I opened it to the board to find out from the board if there are any reasons by any member of this board why this application shouldn't be granted, to let me know that now, so I can have that discussion with each of you to see if I could convince you otherwise.
This is a public hearing, so we should hear from the public before we hear from us? That's, my understanding is how you run a public hearing? Mr. Chairman, is that not...
Is there anybody in, out in the audience who would like to speak? Please.
Rick Aronowitz, soon-to-be of Harrington Liquors. I take exception to some of the facts that were put forth by the previous speaker because I used to run a drugstore chain, used to be Lincoln Discount Drugs, and we had liquor licenses in three of our stores. One of them was full liquor. And these were in towns where that was allowed, and where we had beer and wine, it was because they could not refuse us because they had given it to various gas stations, convenience stores, and all manner of other places. As far as need goes, the ABCC doesn't so much look at distance between licenses as how many licenses are allowed in the town. And so the argument that we're not opening a Pandora's Box is not accurate. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Please.
Good evening, my name is Fred Jeftes, former owner of the, co-owner of Skip's Restaurant Next Door, and presently SFMP Realty Trust trustee, which owns the subject property. I've been in this, I grew up in this town from the early 50s, and I've seen this town grow in a positive direction, from the opening of Route 3 to 495, and I have been pleased to see the positive direction that the town has gone into. As far as a beer and wine license to Premium Meats, I remember, and I know all of you remember, the old ice cream stand and the old Skip's Diner. I think once that whole thing was developed, it really made a positive impact on the town of Chelmsford. If you can remember the old trailer trucks that used to be parked in the back, and we had no idea how we could get rid of them, we finally developed that property, and now there's a tenant there who wants to have a beer and wine license, and if you wanna go and buy a steak, you can get a bottle of wine, I think it's wonderful. It's not, it's not like it's gonna be a barroom, and the analogy is, what's the difference if a liquor store opens up a meat market right next door and sells meats? This gentleman, this family, who has proven themselves, as my family has in the town of Chelmsford, to just have beer and wine when you wanna go and buy a steak so you don't have to go to New Hampshire or down the road a half a mile to Inter Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Tony Housler?
In response to the comment that was made by the one gentleman who just got his license, a little ironic that we have opposition the very first chance we can, but welcome to Chelmsford, I guess. What I would say is, I think, again, he demonstrates exactly the point I've been trying to make. You don't compare a CVS or a Walgreens to a butcher shop. CVS and Walgreens, again, is attracting the entire, what I call, the entire general public, children, teenagers. They go in there for candy, they go in there for anything, they go in there to buy gifts for their parents at holidays. You have a full range of younger kids going into that kind of a store. You don't get that generally at a butcher shop. And if they can't see, if he can't see the difference between that, I hope you can. So that comparison is just quite simply silly. With respect to, it's not just a distance issue, and it's about the public need. The public needs have already been demonstrated here, the testimony's been pretty clear. The other issue is, you know, it opens up the, you know, opportunities for other people. I just demonstrated to you, there are no other likely businesses coming into this town that are going to be requesting a license of this nature from you. And to the extent they'd have to get the support of the police chief, he is in the past, and I believe would be probably against CVS, Walgreens, and convenience stores, having these kind of licenses for the exact same reasons I've just set forth before you. So again, now that you've heard from the public and you've asked us questions, I don't know if you have more questions, but I'd like to get the temperature of the members of the board with respect to, is there a reason why you'd vote against this so that I have an opportunity to ask or engage in you during the open session of why you're, that view or that perspective? So I welcome any one of you to tell me if you'd be against this application, why, so I could have that dialogue with you.
I would recommend that people, they can, they're welcome to answer you if they like. I'm not gonna give an answer, Doug, because, you know, whatever happens with the vote, and I have no idea which way the vote's going.
Well, that's exactly my point.
It's subject to appeal, and whatever is said, you know, could be taken out of context, so.
Well, I'm asking...
I'm gonna say nothing, but you're welcome to, anybody else is welcome to speak if they sort of...
You know, I guess I don't want this to become a debate between, you know, a board member and Mr. Houser. I mean, Bob, you've been on the planning board, you know, you're supposed to close the public hearing, and then you have your deliberations among yourselves.
Right.
Wouldn't this be the time that we get to ask questions?
This is the only time.
Right, you can...
We volunteer information. I think it's kind of returning the meeting around.
I'm trying to understand your mindset, since there's a question.
If you want to talk, speak, sure, that's what I said, I have no problem with anybody who wants to speak. They speak.
I have a few questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, I thank you for getting these documents. One thing I do have to mention, I hate getting documents at these meetings, it'd be nice if we could get them in advance, because it's hard to go through this information and listen to the presentation. But my question specifically would be, of these communities that you've outlined here, how many of them also have beer and wine licenses at convenience stores and markets? Or did you not research that?
I didn't research it because it wasn't relevant to what we were dealing with. I just want to demonstrate that the butcher shop environment or application here is similar to what's been granted in other places.
Understood, but your comment also, your argument has been that this butcher shop will prevent us from having to distribute licenses to a convenience store, and yet I don't have the time to go and check these out to see if they also are typically more in favor of that type of a license, so.
I think that's distinguishable just simply by each town's gonna decide for itself. For example, Lowell allowed beer and wine, beer particularly be sold at the gas station, literally right at Drum Hill on the liquor, the liquor license line, I call it, Chelmsford said it wouldn't want that in that kind of a setting.
Exactly.
The chief of police said that exactly. Lowell nonetheless granted it. In Chelmsford, that wouldn't, that didn't happen in the past, it wouldn't have happened in the past, and it shouldn't happen in the future. That's a completely different application versus what we have before you tonight.
Okay, thank you. I also had a few other questions regarding the meat locker itself. Is this the same company that we gave a Victorla license to a few months ago? And what's going on with that business? I think there was like a luncheon type of setup.
Sandwich place, that's all.
So you don't have children going in to eat sandwiches ever?
Generally, no, it's mostly business people coming in, trying to get sandwiches for lunch. It's not, kids are in school.
Also, let's see, I've heard a few different things, it's a family-run business, there's no non-family employees.
There is one.
There's teenagers working at the store, but they're not, so there are actually teenagers...
No teenagers working at their store.
I thought I just heard that a few moments ago.
Not at...
But not at the point-of-purchase position.
There are no teenagers working at their store, they're all adults, and I think it's one or two non-family members, it's three or four family members that are working there presently. It's a very limited, and they're all adults, I mean, well over the age of 30.
So this would be, so there's the meat business, there's the luncheon counter business, and then, well, I mean, just...
It's one point-of-sale, there are two line, possible registers, of which usually only one is being used, and that's generally manned by Bee, or by Mr. Carpenter or their daughter, Christine. It's usually one of those three people that are literally checking out and handling the register, all of which are adults, some, in fact, I think they even have the required training for tips training, not that they serve there, but they've had backgrounds in it because of the nature of his business.
Thank you.
And if they were ever to sell the business, then they'd go through exactly what Mr. Harrington just went through with his business. An applicant would have to come before you and demonstrate that they were equally entitled to a license to conduct business that way. So this is unique, this license is unique to this family at this location, it's not a generic, it just goes on forever. It's not a generic, it just goes on forever. It's limited.
Go ahead, Glenn. No, go ahead, I, let me.
You know, I, first of all, I appreciate the letters that the residents of Chelmsford have written. There's been a lot of them. The town manager's office has done a nice job in sending them out to the board so that we could read them and get enlightened. I think that all the letters pretty much said that your owner is a great citizen and a great asset to the town, and that it would be nice for the convenience of allowing this additional product to be sold along with meat. And it makes a very, you know, compelling case. And you've also highlighted some other details which also are compelling. But there's one thing that, and it's a word you've used a number of times, and that's unique. Chelmsford is not Lowell, we are not Wilmington, we're not any of these other towns. We're Chelmsford. And the question is, what is the general atmosphere among the residents in terms of this position? Should it be allowed? Is it going to grow? Is it not going to grow in terms of the number of licenses? I believe we have seven. We haven't issued any of them. Is that correct?
Right.
And that we are unique. And, you know, I don't think you can debate that, that we are, and Chelmsford will decide on its own merit, not on the merits of other towns.
Absolutely agree with you. It is a unique, it's what makes Chelmsford, Chelmsford. Every community's unique, but I couldn't agree with your words more strongly. It's a unique place, it's a wonderful place. And more importantly, the meat house is also a unique feature in a unique town called Chelmsford, because it's one of a kind. You don't have this in every situation in every other town. So without, without this, you're driving that business to perhaps other, other locations outside of town, which is hurting, I think, our general population. It's the only butcher shop located in the town of Chelmsford. So I think that's another unique feature. I think your words are great, though, Glenn. I get the point. I appreciate it. Any more questions?
No, I don't think so.
Let me, I'll, I'll go next. First of all, I'd like to ask town council. Mr. Housler has said that he does not think or believe that if we were to grant this license that places like gas stations, the mullahs, Stop &amp; Shop, convenience stores, et cetera, would ever reply, because they couldn't be, they couldn't qualify for being positioned in the right place, because they'd be close to liquor stores. Is that your feeling, too?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Hi, my name is Jeff Blake, and I'm town council. Is that my feeling? My feeling is that each liquor license is, in fact, a unique and an individualized analysis. To say that the fact that you grant one license here would foreclose you from doing it in another place, I'm not sure is accurate. But at the same time, each one is individual. And the board, the liquor license granting authority, you guys, have broad discretion in determining what the public need is. So just because you find that the public need warrants a beer and wine license at this establishment, doesn't mean you would have to find it somewhere else, even if it was a similar establishment, because there might be other establishments closer, you take into account a lot of other factors. So it's not, I don't think it's accurate to say either way that it would foreclose you from issuing the license or other people requesting the license, but at the same time, it also wouldn't prevent you from issuing the license to those folks as well.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
But they could, they could, in fact, if we were to grant this license, they could in fact use the fact that we granted this license as, as, as a wedge to get their license. For instance, let's say I had a gas station that's about, let's say it's three miles away. It's not near any liquor stores. What would prevent us from not, that would fulfill the public good.
Well, I mean, that's up to you. And let me, I think you've been on the board long enough, and I've come to a few of these. I always talk about the so-called Ballerin factors, okay? Ballerin versus the licensing board of Boston. And I just want to read the definition. This is the legal definition. It says here that the statute authorizing the issuance of a liquor license speaks in the terms of serving the public need and in such a manner as to protect the common good. And to that end, to provide, in the opinion of you guys, the licensing authority, an adequate number of places at which the public may obtain, in the manner and for the kind of use indicated, the different sorts of beverages for sale of which provision is made. And I think, you know, when we talk about need, it's not in the literal sense, but rather, the test includes an assessment of the public want and the appropriateness of a liquor license at a particular location. So that's why I say that the analysis is individualized and particularized. So if you have this, this establishment here in this particular location, you may find that it is appropriate, but three or four, five miles away, it may not be appropriate. I think I sat through an earlier decision where you denied, I think it was a package store license, because there were other factors. It was close to, it was close to a bus stop, it was close to schools, it was, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So what I'm saying is that, you know, perhaps all things being equal, this would have some value, but I'm not sure there is such a thing in this town as all things being equal. So each time there one comes before you, it would be you to examine all these factors. And the factors include, I can give you some traffic, noise, size, the sort of operation that carries a license, and the reputation of the applicant, together with, you know, whether or not it's appropriate in a particular location. So there are a whole host of factors.
Okay, because I was, I was notified that there's a, there is a gas station in town that is waiting for this license to be issued, because they want to have beer and wine. And isn't the liquor, isn't the beer and wine license different from the regular liquor license, because it's, it's not all alcoholic? And we have seven of them, and we haven't given any of them. So isn't there a different, a differentiation there somehow?
No, there's, it's, it's pretty much the same analysis. And we also have, as you may recall, we have the benefit here. We've actually had this, you've denied a, a, an application for a beer and wine license here, and it went to the ABCC, and you denied it on a number of reasons, but the, the ABCC found that the, the reason that had any merit to it, in their words, was the public need analysis. So it's all the same factors that you look into, even if it's beer and wine, all alcohol. It's, it's these Ballerin factors that the ABCC is going to look at.
I have one more, one more comment, and that is that, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge that I know Mr. Carpenter. I've been in the store numerous times, and I think he does a great job, and I know he participates in a lot of things in town. Three weeks ago, when I was here, I didn't have my paperwork with me on the original denial, and Attorney Housler kind of paraphrased it for me because he remembered it. But I just want to read a section of it. Conclusion: It is clear that the local board considered public need in determining whether to issue the wine and malts package store license to the applicant. In an analysis of what the town took into consideration, it seemed to be the most significant issue. Since it is well-established that local licensing authorities have very broad discretion deciding whether or not to grant a license to a proposed licensee, it is clear the town board acted within its discretion and was not arbitrary or capricious. The commission agrees with the decision solely on the basis of public need and dismisses the other claims as meritless. So I guess my question is, why is the public need any more demanding now than it was X number of years ago?
Because we presented evidence, this time in the record, to demonstrate need as we went through last time. I don't want to be repetitive, but we, I think we drove that point home last time pretty convincingly. We talked about public need at great length.
Yeah, need being.
And, and added to that, the fact that in this instance, as opposed to last time, another distinguishing factor was the chief of police being very supportive of this application.
Right. Well, we, to be honest, let's be honest with everybody, we have a different police chief than we had the first time.
I agree, but that's a change of.
That's gonna, yeah, that's gonna change. When the next chief comes in, he may not approve this type of thing, but you're right, he did approve it, and.
I'm just trying to answer your question.
Yeah, no, no, I, I appreciate that.
There's a lot, I, I think I demonstrated public need here last time at great length, Bob.
Well, if I recall correctly, public need was what you, what you referenced was that all the towns around us had, had these types of license. I didn't see a specific need being.
Well, you have.
People, people want to, people want to go to a meat store to buy liquor.
This time, you have 12-plus letters in your file from people. You have people that came up to testify here before you that said they're supportive of it. You've had no opposition to it.
But you know what?
And I ask you to, all I ask you to do is to factor that in to your, within your discretion, the fact that so many people have come out in support of it and not, that I'm aware of. I've, I've heard about one letter against it.
Right.
That's what I've heard.
But that doesn't mean anything to me. When I was on the planning board, it meant something to me, because people were neighbors, and they, they had problems with noise or something like that. But this doesn't, I mean, I got 100 signatures a couple of years ago to stop the fire station from being next door, but we still built the fire station. So I think getting a certain number of letters doesn't really make the need any better. It's, you know, it's just, it's like a campaign to get the license, but anyway.
I think we're getting into an argument here.
No, that's it.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
Anybody else have anything to say?
Can I make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we deny the application of BM Carpenter LLC DBA Premium Meats for a beer and wine package store license.
I'll second it.
And if I could, I would like to give my reasons, since the others have spoken.
Well, we, all right, now we're in discussion, and we have a second. You're right, now discussion. Okay. Give your reasons.
Yeah, I mean, one of, my reasons are several for, for this, for this motion. I guess primary among them is that we do still have an existing policy in the Board of Selectmen, which said, which states, "It shall be the policy of the Chelmsford Board of Selectmen not to issue any alcohol licenses to establishments which are defined by law as food stores, including but not limited to retail vendors such as convenience stores, grocery stores, supermarkets, shops, clubs, outlets, or warehouse-type sellers, to sell food to consumers to be eaten elsewhere." This is our policy. It was discussed quite, in quite, quite comprehensively several years ago, when Mr. Carpenter came before the board before, went through so many debates and discussions, and, and the board at the time decided to leave it as is. It's, I think it's pretty straightforward. It, and as, as was mentioned when, in Bob's reading of the, the ruling from the, the last time, it is this board's discretion to, you know, how to, to determine what criteria to use to, to, to issue a license. We do have that, that authority and that discretion, and just because other communities have a different idea and different criteria, that doesn't mean we should follow their lead. Quite frankly, that almost leads us into setting a precedent. Well, if that community sets, you know, issues a license for that situation, and we're following, and we want to do it because of that, then maybe we should follow that community and issue other licenses, too. I'm, I'm not convinced about what, what other communities do. I'm convinced about what our policies say and what precedent has been set even before this policy was in place. I know there were applications to have a similar type licenses on other establishments that were denied by the, the boards at that time, and that was one of the reasons that they did decide to put it in a policy form to maintain some consistency going forward. Those are my reasons.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, may I? I don't mean to interrupt you, but as you know, my name is Jeffrey Blake. I just want you to be clear that we do have, we do have the benefit of a prior decision by the ABCC. That exact reason was brought up during the hearing at the ABCC. The ABCC was not, was not convinced that that would carry the day, if that's, if that's the reason, the policy of the board. If you, Selectmen Joyce just read what they decided was the, the, the reason that carried the day, and the other ones, as they put, were, were meritless. Now, I'm not saying that that's a meritless concern by any stretch of the imagination, but what I am saying is that when we talk about denying in your discretion, I think the, the appropriate analysis looks toward the public need. The last time that I, I actually tried that case before the ABCC for you guys, and the, one of the issues was the policy. The other issue was the close proximity of the other liquor stores, as we, as I think it's, the evidence here, less than a mile away where they could get their, where they could get their beer or wine or, or whatever else. So I would suggest that while that's an important, that's an important issue, just, we do have guidance from the ABCC with respect to that being the sole reason.
Okay.
Thank you.
The reason was not in the, in the motion, so I guess, should there be a reason in the motion?
Well, I just, what I'm doing, yeah, these are all findings that you would make, absolutely.
Any other discussion?
Go ahead, go ahead.
You know, I would just follow up the comments of town council that really the decision is about the needs of the community, and that's where the decision should be made about what those needs are.
I, I've looked at this application, and I just don't see that, similar to what Bob said, that there isn't any significant change over the decision that was made several years ago, and that with so many, with the liquor store within, you know, you can go in either direction, and, and I think there is a, enough availability to, to purchase alcohol within a close proximity that it, I don't see how this application is different in terms of location. Just moving the, the rack from one side of the room to the other, I just, to me, it just, we're trying again, as opposed to there's anything new here to present.
Okay. Any other discussion? The motion is to deny the license, correct? Okay.
That's correct.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Five to nothing. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, under, under licenses, we have a Class II Auto Dealer License, One Stop Automotive Services, Inc., 295 Littleton Road.
Thanks for your time. My name's Jim Welch, and I've asked for the license to service the customers of my business. And just, any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Have you been in the business before? Have you, have you had a Class II license at any time?
I had a Class II license in Littleton. I had business in Littleton for 30 years.
Okay. How many cars are you looking?
Asking for eight cars.
Eight cars.
Is this where Sunshine used to be, right next to the automotive pots place?
No. You know where the car wash is?
Yeah.
Right there.
Oh, it's the car wash.
Same facility.
Oh, okay. I thought it was further up. And did you give us a drawing of how you will be taking care of eight cars? Because I know that, that lot, that lot's come before the planning board numerous times. But there has to be a plan for where you're going to put the cars.
I've got a drawing here that, we had a couple of different, I didn't photocopy them, I probably should have, didn't realize, but I can hand it out if you want to pass it along, basically.
Well, I just like, I mean, I can pass it down to everybody.
Thirty-nine parking spots plus 11, if you include the bays that are on the property.
So.
Sixteen down the side, 14 in the back, and nine in the front.
So where are you going to have the showplace? The, where are you going to display your cars? That's what I'm.
It'd be the first eight on the left-hand side as you pull in.
First eight?
Yeah.
Okay, in front of the garages?
Well, they're backed in to where Ferrera's is on that side.
Oh, okay, they'll be on the Ferrera side.
Right.
Okay.
So, they're, they're out of the way as far as, you know, it's better there for visibility. I mean, if Tom wanted me to do something different, I would, but...
Because I know there's always been an issue with that landscaping in between not being taken care of. Are you going to line all this?
The landscaping in between? I just put sod down about a month ago for the landscaping.
And are you going to line with, uh, like these?
It already is lined.
It is lined? And it's lined diagonally like that?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to look at it, rest of the board?
Where do you expect to get most of your cars? Dealers, used, from dealers or from the auctions or?
Either from the auctions, from dealers, or customers that are trying to sell their cars. Problem I have is I have customers looking for cars and a need that I can't fulfill for them right now.
You said you were, you were in Littleton for 30 years?
Correct.
How many cars you sell a year approximately? Just, just...
I had two-car license back then, smaller piece of property, probably at most 15 cars in a year, I would say. It's just another part of the business. I'm in auto repair business.
Anybody else have any questions?
A question, and in the lots that we have currently, do we have to worry about any kind of toxic waste or, or leakage or anything? Is that ever a consideration?
It's an auto repair shop that, I mean, if you come by the property, you'll see how clean it is, quite honestly.
I mean, it's a consider, it's a...
Do you own that auto repair there at 295?
I do.
Okay.
I mean, it's a nature of the beast, but they clean it.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, right.
I mean, you have a tow truck come in and they spill oil, we clean it up. I mean, obviously, you know, you want, I mean, I own the property, so I like to keep it clean. I just spent enough money on a 21E, so...
No other discussion here?
It's a public hearing.
Okay. It is a public hearing?
Yes, it is. If you look at the first page.
It doesn't say so on anything, that's why. Okay. Okay, if this is a public hearing, is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak in pro con regarding this application? Okay. You want to make a motion to close it?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You want to make a motion to?
Yeah, make a motion to approve a, uh, Class II Auto Dealers License for One Stop Automotive Services to be exercised on the premises at 295 Littleton Road for a maximum of eight cars on premises.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, nothing. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Have a good night.
Okay. One-day, one-day beer and wine license, uh, on the 5th of, uh, August 5th at the Chancellor Public Library Open House, 25 Boston Road. Anybody here from the library? I don't think we have a problem with, uh...
I don't think so.
Anybody here would add, do we? Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a one-day beer and wine license to the Chancellor Public Library for an open house to be held at 25 Boston Road on August 5th, 2016.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, nothing. These are all, no, the rest of them are all St. Vatan's, right? Okay, so you want to make this one motion or... Does anybody hear from St. Vatan's? I didn't see the regular gentlemen that's here normally, so, but we, you want to, you want to, you want to make one motion?
Yeah.
For all these?
I'll make a motion to approve the following one-day licenses to St. Vatan's Armenian Church to be exercised on the premises at 180 Old Westwood Road on the following dates, um, August 7th for a beer and wine license, August 4th for an all-alcohol, September 24th for all-alcohol, October 5th for all-alcohol, November 5th for all-alcohol, and November 8th for all-alcohol one-day licenses.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, nothing. Thank you. Okay. Town Manager reports, first draft of the annual town meeting warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Believe it or not, we're, we're actually looking at fall annual town meeting. Today being the first Monday in August was the deadline for citizen petition warrant articles. Uh, there were no citizen petition warrant articles submitted by today's 4:00 p.m. deadline. What I have provided for you is a draft of, first draft of the fall annual town meeting warrant. Just to give you a sense of schedule, you're meeting this evening. Your next scheduled meeting is in three weeks on the 22nd of, of August. I'll give you a second draft, uh, and actually it'll be a final draft, um, and that because when you then meet on the second Monday in September, which I believe is the 12th, you will be, uh, asked to sign the warrant for the fall annual town meeting, which will take place about six weeks later. So, just, basically just giving you a run-through tonight real quickly, um, and then, like I said, a second go-around and then when you meet, uh, at the first meeting in September, the Monday after Labor Day, that will be the time to sign the warrant and then have it posted in a timely manner. As you can see right now, the, the, uh, list is rather light, um, and basically most of the list is, is rather, um, traditional for a fall annual town meeting. Uh, and in fact, if there aren't some of these requests, we, they may actually fall off the list. But first article we always have is reports of town offices and committees. Then, then from there, we would have the customary, we, we appropriate the E-rate revenue from the previous fiscal year that just closed out last June 30th.
Can I stop you for a second?
Sure.
Yeah. There was a time when, uh, the number one reports of town offices and committees?
Yeah.
We used to invite the state legislators.
Right. We can do that.
Is there any feeling? I'd, I'd really like them to come in and say something to the, you know me, George.
Well, you're the favorite with them.
Well, ask them about Kronos, right? No, I just think it's good.
Again, we can, we can, we can, yeah, we have ample time. If you want, I can, I can give them an early notification of that.
Yeah, I mean, they might be busy, you know, doing something at that point, but I'd like to invite them.
Make sure that you let them know that that was at Mr. Selectmen Joyce's, uh...
Yeah. Including Senator, Senator Barrett, too.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry to... No, that's fine, no, that's fine. I, I made a note of it. I'll get, I'll get an email out to them and I'll copy on it. The next item again traditionally is the E-rate, which is the money that was received from this federal program that supports technology, uh, from the previous fiscal year. That amount then gets voted in the subsequent year. So, again, traditional article gets moved pretty quick. Uh, again, it's just a, a known amount. Uh, I don't believe that was included in the municipal reform package that the legislature adopted over this past weekend as a reform item that would not necessitate us to, uh, have to vote it. The third article is, again, a space to be held for any collective bargaining agreements that are, uh, approved and ready to go before town meeting for funding and approval authorization. We'll see what we have as we come into the fall. At this point, there have been no agreements reached, uh, on either these, uh, on any of the town's nine unions, nor are there any reached by the school department, which of course we recall do not come to town meeting for approval under state law. Uh, the next one would be an amendment to the current fiscal year operating budget. Uh, again, we're now into our second month. We'll continue to look at, see if there are any amendments, but at this point, I'm not aware of any. Uh, so again, you can see that article fall off. Same thing for the sewer construction stabilization fund. You remember that's a annual fall article. Remember, we take the amount of money that we take in and the interest, uh, from the economic aspect.
The price fund, yeah.
Exactly. Uh, the next one is the, again, any need to amend the current fiscal year sewer enterprise operating budget. Again, I'm not aware of any, but we're holding a spot at this point. The next one is, is obviously one that's going to be a subject of tomorrow evening's open, uh, hearing at the school administrative offices. And this has to do with these school building projects, feasibility study, uh, perhaps even short-term investment for a full-day kindergarten or what have you. Basically, the, this, it's expected that the school committee will make a request for, for funding to continue the process of both long-term for, um, for the planning of, of a future facility investment as well as potentially a short-term, depending upon their options. Now, we, as we know, there may be some that may not come to town meeting. If one of their options for short-term kindergarten is rental of space, then, you know, that obviously would something that would come into the operating budget for next April. But if they're looking to do some purchase of modular facilities and/or prep work related for such expansions, then obviously that work has to be done in advance because you couldn't wait till April to get that work if, if the goal is to put that in place for operation to have full-day kindergarten next September. So, again, right, at this point, it, it's a placeholder. I've not received any language from the school department or the school superintendent, but I think it's clearly, you know, it's clearly out there and we know that they're coming forth. And again, there'll be more discussion tomorrow evening.
That's at what, 7:00 at the, uh...
The school administrative offices.
Ultimately, do you feel Article 7, it will really end up as two separate articles? One is the all-day kindergarten, one is the long-term solution as opposed to putting it together?
It may. I, I, problem is I don't know what, what, what they're, it may be two articles. I, I think, I was, I saw the last meeting where they discussed this and, and again, I didn't anticipate that this immediacy for the need for the facilities for, for next September. Um, so you're right, Glenn. At the end of the day, it could be two separate articles. Or it could be two parts of one article. It'd be interesting to see what it is they're proposing. I think whatever the investment is, I think, and I'll say this tomorrow evening, or I intend to say it tomorrow evening, I think the community wants to know what is the long-term plan and therefore how does the short-term need fit into the long-term plan? And so I, so I think the answer may be yes, but it, it's quite possibly could be two separate articles.
Are they going to be asking, uh, to appropriate money to build a new building?
No. They, what they want to do is they need to continue to do the preparatory work to submit a request to the MSBA, which, which would probably happen next March, meaning in, what, what, seven months from now? And then you really, then that would have to get reviewed by the state. So, you, I don't, my understanding is you probably wouldn't see a significant appropriation, meaning for feasibility and design, till probably spring of 2018. Uh, that's when, but that, and then, and then you're probably not talking the full vote till probably another year after that. I mean, just look at the process that Bavica had.
And that would be when you, uh, you'd have an exempt.
You have to do debt exemption, right.
You'd have an exempt...
So, what my understanding is, is you're probably talking a modest amount of money. I think the superintendent told me between 25 and 40,000 perhaps this fall to continue the process. When you're looking at, um, March or spring of 2017, uh, of 2018, um, you could be looking at probably a million dollars of that range to get, you know, plans and designs and specifications. And then you're probably in a year after doing the debt exclusion. That's why they claimed, and rightfully so, that it takes about six years to get something from the genesis to occupancy.
Right.
The difficulty is you don't know where you are until you're pretty far down the road, as we've known in the community based on the vote from 12 years ago.
Yeah.
I would, I would have normally brought up it at the end when there's a discussion about committees that you responsible to or visit with. There was a very spirited, uh, meeting that they had concerning the, the choices for all-day kindergarten. I think they ranged, the plans ranged from maybe 2.5 million to 57 million in terms of just the short-range plan. It, it basically involved on two sides. One side of the issue is to rent space. The other side is to buy parts, attach them to various buildings. And then there was a lot of discussion about what that can do. If you attach them, it means attach them to some of the schools, you trigger having to renovate all that school. In other cases, the discussion was made that, well, what if we don't...
Even with portables? Even with portables?
Yes.
Distance from the building, attached or not attached?
If you don't attach them?
Yeah.
Then you don't. But then there was discussion, well, what if we just build a kind of, uh, overhead, uh, a covered bridge kind of thing?
Walkway, yeah.
Walkway. Does that trigger it? And then the answer was, uh, they said, well, maybe we'll have to check that out. So, there's a meeting tomorrow night. It's, it's, you know, open. I would encourage any citizens who have the opportunity to view that meeting. It is online by Chumpsu Telemedia.
Okay.
It's lengthy, uh, and it is intense. And I don't know which way they're going to go because it was left that, um, Gary Persicetti was called up to give some presentation and part of it was about the free space in town. There's a lot of free space, but does it exactly meet the configuration that the school needs? And it was left that the school department should go out and investigate or someone on their behalf go out and investigate, is there available space? Because if there isn't, you can take that one right off the board. So, um, it, it's not an easy issue and, and I think they did do justice to all the available choices at the meeting. And you may, anyone who's sitting, wants to sit in tomorrow night may want to look at it to get some background in the whole thing.
So, the meeting is just school committee? It's not a joint meeting?
No, just school.
When, uh, when...
We're invited.
We're invited.
Yeah, when are we going to have a joint meeting? We haven't had one of those in a long time.
We have a big one Wednesday.
One on Wednesday night. That's Article, that's Article 9.
Yeah.
That's on the 129 overlay, uh, district.
Yeah, that's with us and finance and economic development and...
Finance committee and, you know, school committee, assessors.
Assessors.
Planning board?
Planning board.
Yeah, they're running it.
I think there's like six boards in...
The Economic Development Committee is running it.
How about the neighbors? They invite the neighbors?
No. Not directly.
You better do it if you're gonna, if you think you're gonna do anything on 129. That and precinct four.
Okay.
Anyway.
Okay, so, so that's, again, one or multiple articles regarding this school building project. The next article would be, the, the final, financial article is, is to put funds into the stabilization fund. Article 9 is, just we were speaking to, it would be a, a placeholder for an article regarding the zoning of the Route 129 Bavica Road, industrial area amenities, overlay district. Uh, again, that, that meeting is Wednesday evening at 7:00 p.m. And Glenn wants to comment on this as well, so I'll stop there.
Just from the standpoint of at the recent meeting where they had owners in town come to the meeting, uh, there was not a lot of, um, yays that you're doing anything, but the only yay that there really was, was when it was presented that the number one thing you don't do in this is you refer to it in any sense of industrial because that connotates Pittsburgh in 1970. Call it anything, but don't call it industrial.
It is industrial.
And the zoning, it's...
But it just produces a certain...
Yeah.
Feeling, so...
In fact, sewer, the sewer...
Change the name a little bit.
The sewer project that went through there to service those people was called the Industrial Sewer Commission, wasn't it, Paul? I think so. It was before your time, but, yeah, okay.
Will that meeting be televised?
I believe Chumpsu Telemedia is...
They'll always be televised.
Yeah, they'll all be televised.
Wednesday, Wednesday?
Wednesday night. So, you got tonight at 7:00, tomorrow night at 7:00, Wednesday night at 7:00.
Get there early if you want a seat.
Fourth and third, whatever the hell it was.
You went, Paul, you went over the stabilization just...
Right. It's a placeholder. I don't have anything, but...
Oh, you don't have anything yet?
No, the, the town accountant has not closed out the books. We don't have free cash certified.
Okay, I just thought you had...
It's just, it's just a placeholder. No, no, just because I don't have anything.
Okay.
The, the next article is a placeholder again. This is, has to do with, uh, accepting an amendment, amending, uh, Mass General Law's Chapter 40U.[1655.60] This is that issue that really is being considered, I guess, by anyone. It's the Board of Health. This is the one about enforcing, you know, derelict properties and so forth. So, that's... The materials have all been provided. I know you've been copied on some email correspondence on that. I've placed it in the hands of Richard Day, and that's where it stands. So, I don't... I have not received a request from the Board of Health to include the article on the warrant. And then, the final one is a request to increase the kennel maximum for the number of dogs from 25. Right now, the current maximum size of a... Of any kennel in the community is 25. And we've had a request that originated from PetSmart to increase that amount. And then, we've checked with the veterinary clinics in town to get their input regarding an increase of the number of... Maximum number of dogs and kennels. Right now, it's classified in our bylaws of 25.
Is this... Will they have to be quarantined?
No, no, no. This is basically holding kennels...
How many they can have?
How many they can have on premises.
We have that many at one time?
A hundred?
Yes. Right now, right now, PetSmart has a request to increase that to 100.
Now, is there any other criteria, like how many per square foot or anything like that?
Well, again, the bylaw provides the Board of Health as a regulatory and complaint authority. So, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't mean a puppy clinic. What it basically means is that, right now, they cannot hold more than 25. And again, the request originated from them. We've also had favorable response from the veterinary clinics to go above 25 as well. It doesn't... Again, we're not the planning board. We're not the ones... We're not talking a modification of the building and so forth. It's just, right now, they're... They are constrained by that 25 number.
Imagine what 100 dogs sound like barking?
I don't know what 25 sounds like barking at PetSmart.
I don't know one.
At PetSmart, you know. But again, if there is a barking or other issue, then that... The town has a bylaw for, you know, nuisance ordinance regarding clinics.
I know.
And kennels, you know, so... So, you're correct.
So, Paul...
And then, go ahead.
I thought 101 Mill Road wanted a place.
Right, and that was what I was gonna say. Since this publication of this list, I've had two other requests come in, and they're actually right on Mill Road. I received an email from Bill Griffin that was submitted on... At 11:00 on Thursday evening. He wants to put a placeholder in the fall warrant for an article related to 101 Mill Road.
That's it?
That's all I know at this point, related. So...
Glenn wants to sell it.
So, at this point, there's an article. I expect we'll hear a report. I know they've had their structural analysis complete.
Yeah, yeah.
So, again, I think... Because I was originally holding a spot for them under town offices and committees' reports, but he wants an article. And then, I also received a request from George Ripson. And he's requesting a placeholder regarding the clearing Russell Mill Pond of invasive weeds, flora, and algae bloom, or something related there, too. Apparently, the Millstream Foundation is gathering data regarding the 10-plus miles of the drained area, and so, they're basically looking at aquatic remediation possibilities. And so, they could have plans and costs prepared for October Town Meeting and actual proposals at Spring Town Meeting. So...
We wouldn't vote money at the fall one, would we?
It does not appear to be the case at this point. So, it may... Again, that may fall back to a report, even though it's not a town committee. You know, we may just...
We...
We could even put an article on to hear a report from the Mills... You know, the Millstream Foundation.
But as far as appropriating any money...
It's unclear, but again, it's a possibility.
We wouldn't do that, then. We'd have to go to spring.
Well, you could.
You could.
Whatever the town wants to do, we have...
If the town meeting says, I want to appropriate money, they can appropriate it.
Yeah, if the article said... If the article...
Oh, I thought it...
If the article warns the town meeting that they're gonna...
I thought it fell under... It wouldn't have had advanced notice of... You know what I'm saying? People, the public wouldn't have had advanced notice of what the costs were and stuff.
That would be the nature of the warrant article. We haven't seen... We haven't drafted any language yet. Again, I'm...
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure what their request is. So, it may be simply a report, or it may be a request for...
That's what I... That's what I would think it would be, a report.
But we don't know. The only other thing that, again, is up in the air at this point is, as I mentioned in an earlier comment, the legislature finished its session last evening at midnight or shortly thereafter. They did enact municipal reform or relief or assistance legislation, which is a 265-page bill. We've not received the content of that. So, as that details come out in the weeks ahead, there may be something that we may look to for action at Fall Town Meeting. Again, I just don't know enough about it. I... I've... It's, you know, we're waiting for the Municipal Association to give us some guidance, as well as from Town Council and so forth. But the intent was, was to provide municipal relief for cities and towns, and so, we'll look to see what it is. So, again, that would be other possibilities in the weeks ahead. So, that's all I have, unless the board has any other items that you would like to be developed for Town Meeting. That's where we're at.
Now, you have a bid award?
Yeah, I just... A quick bid award this evening. This has to do with the school administrative building roof replacement. And as you saw in your packets, there were six proposals submitted for the project, and we're seeking a bid award to the lowest qualified bidder, SOM Construction, and the bidder amount is $140,000.
Paul, how much did we spend last year? I seem to be...
Appropriation for this was $165,000.
$165,000?
Right. Remember, you don't want to be confused in the... This is the roof replacement. We did work last year on the HVAC units.
Yeah, and we appropriated... And we...
Appropriated money at that.
We approved that like a couple of weeks ago, I think, or...
Right, the bid award, exactly, exactly.
So, there's two things. One's the air conditioning, the other one's the roof.
Right, exactly.
And I thought we spent money in last year's budget for the roof, too. No?
No, we haven't redone the roof, no.
All right.
I need a motion to confirm that bid award.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the town manager's bid award for the replacement of the school administration building to SOM Construction for the amount of $140,000.
Second that?
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
73 Dalton Road Lip Application?
Yeah, in your packets, and if you may recall, the last act of the previous board prior to the April election was the board's endorsement of the Edward B. Bell Estates Local Initiative Project at Dalton Road. What we have received from DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development from the state, is to a formal notification that the applicant has applied under the local initiative program for preliminary approval of the above- referenced project. Again, this was a rental with five units, two of which would be low income under the provisions of... Conference of Housing Law, Chapter 40B. And right now, they're in their 30-day comment period, which basically expires 30 days from the date of the letter, which would be basically the date of your next meeting. So, you can choose either issue comments tonight, if you wish to issue them at all, or you can table this to your next meeting. I just want to make the board and the community aware, this is not the state's approval of the project. This is the preliminary approval. And then, what would happen is, if the state grants approval, the project then has to come back locally to the Board of Appeals for consideration. So, again, recognizing that this is a different board than the one that sat on the approval for the submittal of it, I just wanted to bring it before you. Again, you... The board has the options of commenting or not commenting, and either commenting tonight, if you choose to do so, or commenting at your next meeting.
It's interesting. They call the chief-elected official George Dixon, but in reality, it was Matt Hanson.
Right, Matt was one at the time. That's correct.
It's interesting that he was...
And Matt wrote the letter.
And Matt wrote the letter.
Yeah, he saw the letter, yeah.
I just have a couple of things to comment on that, and I, you know, I was in the audience when the previous board voted on this. But there are a couple of things that... Was... Did all of the criteria in our policies... Was that all followed, the process in our policies? Was that followed for that? I mean, as far as notification of abutters and getting the assurance that they talked to the abutters?
Yes.
Yeah, he walked around and delivered letters.
Yeah, plus, they were all here that... The night of the hearing, almost all of them.
No, there was a couple, yeah.
Most of them, yeah.
I got letters from several of the abutters, so...
Okay.
But I... At some point, I'd like to change the policy, so they have to be done by mail, by registered mail.
There is a walk-through. There is a walk-through next Monday, I think. I just got a call today about it. So, I guess because, you know, somebody from the board has to be there, and because I'm on the Housing Advisory Board and also the chair here, I guess I'll be there. So, somebody from the state is coming up, and I think somebody from the planning board, the ZBA, has to be there, or, I don't know, there's two or three other boards that have to be there. I don't know where they are. Do you know where they are, Paul?
I've not been notified of that meeting, no.
The only comment I have about this is that the unit price affordable is $11.52, and I think that's obscene for affordable.
That's what... That's determined by the state or the federal government, whatever.
The state determines?
Yeah, yeah, it's not... I mean, it's...
That's tied to the median family income.
And that's only for one bedroom, right?
My mortgage is...
Yeah, that's a one-bedroom, right. I mean, the two bedrooms are like, what, like $1,300 or something, almost $1,300.
I think it's obscene. That's my comment.
It's consistent with David Henderson put out.
That is. No, that's what it is. It is the same. They have to go by the same rules, the same law. That's what I mean. It's consistent throughout the state. I mean, the state tells us exactly what it is or not. It's a median... Based on the... It's either 20% or 25% on medium income on the...
But it's not affordable to the poor people that can't afford it, if you get my drift.
No, that's...
It's not public.
I agree with you. I think affordable rates are high, but, I mean, it's not done by the town. It's not a local law. It's what's given to us by the state. They determine for each community.
I have a question on that regard. If more housing goes up that is not labeled affordable, that's just market price, but the market price is fairly high, does that bring our affordable rate up as well?
No, no, the... No. It's based on median... It's based on income, not housing.
Median income in the town.
Okay, not... Not rate of the... Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Go on.
Who are you?
Yeah, come up, please.
Steve Depoyan, 79 Dalton Road. It'd be two doors...
How do you spell the last name, sir?
Depoyan, D-E-P-O-I-A-N.
Thank you.
I'd be two doors down from this big building. A year ago, Mr. Harvey was gonna move the Dutton House from the library to this piece of land. It was a non-conforming lot. He said if he could work with the neighbors, he could put this thing up. It didn't go up. I just have, you know, I just... I'm interested what it's gonna do to the neighborhoods. It's gonna... It's gonna lower my evaluation than everybody else who's around it? What impact does it have on traffic? It's a real busy corner now. That's all I get to say.
That's what the state is gonna do next, as I said, next Monday. I mentioned it was a sidewalk, and I think that's part of what they're gonna determine. The state is gonna determine.
And as far as, like, getting notice, we never got a notice.
In March, you didn't get notice?
No. And I'd rather have it a registered letter than him just walking around.
Yeah, we gotta change that.
Well, when the hearing goes before the Board of Appeals at a future date, there'll be certified mail notice to all abutters.
Is one unit removed?
No, no, I'll be here. I'll try to be here for every meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, 300 feet, is it?
300 feet, oh, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Stefanini. I'm the Director of Abutters. My husband was here at the last meeting, and he spoke up about this project. I just wanted to talk a little bit more about it, because it really is affecting our family. We're very concerned about this project because it is so large. It's 5,500 square feet in size, and it's proposed to construct on 71 North Road. This huge structure is 21... 26 feet from the distance of our house. Our home is 1,350 square feet, so it will actually cast a shadow on where we live. Instead of seeing skies and trees, we will now see decks of people looking to our yard, a large parking lot with lots of dumpsters and many, many cars. The proposed plan and project will dramatically invade on our property and our privacy, and also will impact the value of our home. Like Steve had said earlier, the Zoning Board of Appeals previously ruled that a two-family home on the same lot would be detrimental to the neighborhood and only approved the variance for a single-family home, which was the Dutton House. We're up... I'm asking that the Board of Selectment uphold the zoning board's decision when voting on this application. The proposed project doubles the size of the Dutton House project, and it has potential to significantly increase its residency. On the Dutton House, we worked with Mr. Harvey. We went to all the meetings. We made a compromise on the location of the home. We submitted plans for the new 40B. We hope that you consider these compromises when considering this project. We just feel that, you know, the last meeting, it just seemed a little chaotic and a little... Didn't seem like everybody was fully on board. It was... People were leaving the Board of Selectment. People were coming in. And I just ask, I don't know if there's anything you can do about this project, but would you want a five-apartment unit complex right next to your home? Do you feel that this is fair and right to do to us? So, I just hope that you consider that, and thank you for your time.
I think the only thing they can do at this point is go to the Board of Appeals...
There's only Board of Appeals.
And fight it, but the attitude of this town is that when someone brings in a 40B, the reason he can build five instead of two is because it's a 40B project.
Right.
But the opinion that's expressed by most officials in this town is that when you go to the Board of Appeals, they will always uphold the landowner, because they don't want to go to court, because every single court case that's been done in the state on 40B, the towns have lost. So, you're welcome to go and express your opinion.
What number, Dalton Road?
73?
We're 77 Dalton Road. We're ne... Oh, we're right next door.
You're the next...
So, you're not...
The next houses.
Your number is 75?
77.
77, okay, yeah. Yeah, all those considerations will be taken under consideration.
Right.
I mean, all those... They... He went under two different... He went for a regular variance with the Dutton House.
Right.
And then, the second... The second time he came in, he came in under Chapter 40B was completely different.
We can't do that.
When looking at the Massachusetts State website, it has a design guideline for 40B properties, which regulate the size of the proposed property in relationship to its surrounding dwellings. I mean, looking at the size of our lot and our home, and looking at the proposed project, it just seems so out of range with the appropriate size and scale of this project, that I just...
I think all that would be taken into consideration by the various boards and the state.
Were you the one that wrote me the letter?
We've written several letters.
Someone wrote me a letter right after the March meeting.
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
First time, did you receive any notification to respond in writing about your feelings about it at all?
My husband came and spoke at the meeting.
Right, but did you get anything in the mail?
There was a delivered letter with our first names written in magic marker.
Right, hand-delivered, which he...
Did you respond at that time?
We came to the meeting.
You just came to the meeting, nothing in writing that you...
No.
That's why we have to change that, so that people get registered letters.
And I was not on the board at that time, however, I did attend that meeting. And it was... It got to be somewhat contested. And I don't remember the name of the gentleman. One gentleman in particular was very... From the... Arabada was very vocal. Was that your husband?
Possibly. Yeah, I think he was.
Okay, I think so.
It's just very upsetting, you know? It's just this huge project that's happening right on top of our home.
It's just the process is just beginning, man.
Yeah.
The process is just beginning now.
Right.
So, you'll have plenty of time to, you know, voice your...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you.
One more question. Sorry, one more question. If this gets approved because it's 40B, they... You want 40B. What stops this person going right next door to them and say, okay, now my house that's there, I'm gonna change that to 40B, and another four or five families can come in?
He could.
He could. Okay, thanks.
He'd knock down his house and put up eight units, probably.
He could, but in a different...
He could.
Not just say he could. He'd have to do different things.
Yeah, he'd have to go through the process, but theoretically, it's possible.
Yeah.
I could knock down my house, house, and put a three-family in and call it 40B. But yet, I'm in a single... I'm in a single-family zoning, but 40B eliminates all that.
You're gonna charge those same rates?
Hmm?
You're gonna charge those same low rates?
All right, we got Wardway, no parking zone?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is a request. It's prepackaged to establish no parking zones on Wardway. I should probably turn this over to Pat Wojo, just because Pat really is the genesis of this request.
Well, it wasn't...
You have the request from Chief Spinney, but in terms of the... It was a conduit, I guess, for this request.
Right, the request came through me. I think it's not... No parking, I don't think they want on Wardway. They want on Groton Road on both sides of Wardway. In other words, the east side and west side are...
There probably is no parking already. It probably should be signs, but...
No, there is not. There is, and that's what they do. The trucks park on Groton Road, and he would prefer that they come down Wardway, which is basically his driveway.
Right.
So they're off the street.
The challenge with, as you recall, is if it's Groton Road, it's a state road. So we don't have the authority to put signs up or regulate parking and so forth.
So if we put no parking on Wardway, they all park on Groton Road, and that would be exactly what they don't want. So we want the no parking signs on...
Could we request the no parking on Groton Road from the state?
Yes, the board can submit a request to Mass Highway, Mass DOT.
Area four, what is it?
Yeah, District four.
District four.
So in the interim, could we put up temporary no parking signs, or is that...
No, we can't do anything on a state highway.
I don't think so. Nice try, Pat.
You want to write the letter, compose a letter, and we'll send it to, we can sign it and send it to Department of Transportation District four office. It's in Arlington, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, do we want to, okay, we can do that. So you want me to just bring it to our next meeting, or can I go ahead and just draft it and send it?
You can draft it.
If I can get a vote?
Ask for a vote now.
Okay.
And then you can just go ahead and do it.
All right, I'll make a motion that we send a letter to District four, the Mass DOT, to ask to install no parking signs on Groton Road on either side of Wardway, in order to discourage truck parking in that location.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, nothing, you have it. Okay, the next 11 and 12, we're going to skip, and we're going to postpone that to the 22nd. That's the town accountant and the town manager's performance appraisals. And so now we have to make an appointment to fill the vacancy in the charter review committee.
Oh, yeah.
Which is...
Okay, it was Laura's.
Laura's.
Laura, I have...
What's on the list?
I have the list.
Yes, I actually reviewed the list on the June 6 meeting.
I noticed that wasn't in our packet, so...
So I got all of that, and actually, my nomination was Donald Van Dyne, who happened to be here. You don't want?
We'll add it, son.
Glenn Thorne was left in...
Will Addy.
Glenn Thorne, and Mary, Glenn Thorne and Mary Carrie.
Elizabeth Smith.
Elizabeth Smith. Pardon?
Are these other people all? There's only three left here.
Yeah.
All right.
One, two, three.
Okay.
Question?
Yep.
I was excused from that, because my wife was one of the candidates.
Yeah.
And she was voted on. So I have no vested interest in it, and I didn't get to pick anyone.
You can have my vote.
No, it was her vote that, so she's replacing her own person.
It was her candidate to quit.
We each had two votes, so if Glenn didn't have any vote...
Well, Laura's willing to give up her...
I'm willing to give up my vote.
Oh, all right.
I don't have a problem with that.
You want to make your point?
Maybe he'll have more luck.
He could pick one now, because his wife isn't on...
She's on the committee.
Yeah, but she's not in consideration of being appointed.
No. So you want to pick one of the few that are left?
You know which one to vote? Yeah. Glenn Thorne.
Glenn Thorne.
You're going to say yourself.
Of all the ones you could pick.
I'll make a motion that we approve Glenn's appointment of Glenn Thorne as a replacement on the charter review committee.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, appointments?
Viv was trying to figure out that was an unanimous vote.
That was an abstain.
Okay.
And you didn't call the vote, George.
Good job, Viv.
Yeah.
He pulled it over George, but he didn't pull it over you.
Well, you're pretty sharp, Bob Thorne. You made me have not ashamed.
I pride myself on it.
I know you do. You're good at it. Okay, appointments, Paul?
Yeah, just seeking your confirmation of the following appointments. Joseph Varnum to the Chelmsford Center for the Arts Advisory Committee for a one-year term ending June 30, 2017. John Turbity to the Community Action Program Committee for a one-year term ending June 30, 2017. Will Ardbison to the Historical Commission to fill an unexpired term that expires on June 30, 2018. And John Moses to the Military Community Covenant.
This is exactly the Selectman.
Right, which is right. Yeah, that's your appointment.
Yeah, that's a Selectman appointment.
Okay, that's a Selectman appointment. Stop there.
All right. So I'll make a motion that we approve the three town manager appointments as presented.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion that we appoint John Moses to the Military Community Covenant for a three-year term ending June 30, 2019.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes, May 9, 2016.
I'll make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes from May 9, 2016, as presented.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, nothing. The next item, we're going to, there's just a couple here. This Route 129 corridor, the meeting is Wednesday night, so I think it's best that we discuss that after they have their meeting, and we know exactly what their plan is. And the other thing was the potential affordable housing projects. John Edward, from the Chairman of the Housing Advisory Board, is in the process of finishing the planned production schedule for the 40, for all affordable housing projects. And he would be in, either at our next meeting or the following meeting, to give a full detailed analysis of where we are with the 40, with our 10%, and what we have in the pipeline. And he'll give us a thorough situation, yes.
Yeah, about a year ago, the Housing Advisory Board was going to update the housing production plan. Is that part of that process?
Yes.
And will that be submitted for an extension?
It is, yes. This is the end of the 50.
Oh, it is already?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this will...
Okay.
Okay, now, Selectmen Liaison Reports and Referrals. Dr. Joyce, you're all set? How was your operation?
Good. Yeah, very good. I can see now.
Yeah.
I can even see John Harrington out there.
There is, if you drive through the center, you'll see a lot of progress on the carriage house at the library. The roof, half the roof was completed while I was sitting at the library, the trustees' meeting this evening. So they're making, they're working very quickly, and the scheduled completion date will be August 18.
Hmm. Remember any pictures for us, do you? Just kidding.
And as of this evening, I heard from the Board of Health that all of the families that were in hotels that we were concerned about have been relocated. So that project has essentially worked.
I would think that would have an effect on the school department, that their numbers would go down.
What I've told is a number of the families were relocated out to the Littleton Road rental units, under the Chelmsford Housing Authority. And I've also been informed by the superintendent that there are still some homeless families in the Hawthorne Suites Hotel up in North Chelmsford, off of Drum Hill as well. So I just don't want to give the impression that there are no...
They are, but they are actually...
Right, but they no longer got the Best Western, right.
Right, the conditions at the Hawthorne Suite are in compliance with the state regulations, and so it's completely different.
Right, exactly. I just don't want to give the impression that there are no, that they're no longer any, which I think was the question, are there still homeless families in town? Obviously, the ones that have relocated to Littleton Road are no longer homeless, but there are some still up at the Hawthorne Suites.
Are they in the affordable...
That whole project is affordable.
A hundred percent affordable.
The project is 100% affordable.
It's 90% affordable?
100%.
100% affordable.
My impression was nobody knew exactly where those families went. The state had several thousand a year ago. Governor Baker was committed to eliminating that program. He has drastically cut it down to like 400 or so. But nobody knows exactly where they went.
Well, in our case, they went to the local housing authority.
Well, we don't, you don't know that.
They weren't, all those kids weren't going to school in town either.
Some were, some were being transported outside of Chelmsford as well.
So we really don't have, we don't have a real number on, you know, what the difference is.
Right, we don't know the impact. It could have been, I don't know, maybe.
Glenn, you're all set, Laura?
I believe I am.
Okay.
Just to recap, the school is having their discussion tomorrow night. The board is invited. I encourage anyone at home to watch it, if they don't want to come to the meeting itself. It's liable to be lengthy, because they had a lot of various choices that they were mulling over. And then the following night is the meeting of, seems like most every board has been invited to come to a meeting headed by the Economic Development Committee to discuss 129.
Is the Planning Board going to have the overlay ready for that meeting?
The, Donald, do you want to speak on that? Donald's here, and he's going to be chairman.
Yeah, I thought the last meeting indicated that we were going to get that paperwork in advance of the meeting.
And you should. Good evening, Donald Van Dyne, member of the Economic Development Commission. Yes, come Wednesday evening, 7:00 p.m., School Admin Building. EDC is hosting a multi-board meeting. At that time, we will discuss the why, why 129 at this time is appropriate, and the how. The how will be addressed by the Planning Board. The Planning Board, in advance of that meeting, most likely tomorrow, will send out not only the presentation packet, so there'll be like an 18-slide PowerPoint presentation, as well as their first draft of the overlay.
Have you invited the abuddars and the residents of Precinct Four?
No, I don't believe at this particular meeting, those, the residents or anybody was invited. It is a public meeting, so everybody's open, and anybody would like to come, they're definitely willing to participate. Now, keep in mind, the process will be this, is that after we meet on Wednesday, the Planning Board will then open up at some point, hopefully if we move forward, the Planning Board will open that up to a public hearing. At that time, everybody will be notified that the public hearing, and give an opportunity for the public to address any concerns or their support for the project.
Just a question for Paul, really. Have there ever been a meeting like this, with this many boards invited to be at that particular site? Because the room is not that big.
Yeah, in my 10 years, I've never seen such a...
Where is it going to be built?
A consolidation of so many boards. School admin, where we have the tri-board meetings.
We'll get a new roof.
This is more than, and actually, they redecorated the whole room. It's not just the new roof. The curtains gone.
They got plenty of money, that's why.
The curtain's gone, the new flooring, but they, but no, I've, I guess what the anticipation is, not all the members are available, because it is midsummer, but they have invited everybody around the big table there.
You got enough room?
We got enough room.
All right.
Well, I just think it's imperative that you reach out to the residents that are abutting it, and the residents that are on the other side, the Mill Road side.
Absolutely, I agree with it.
Those are the, and that's, we've done it several times in this town. We haven't consulted with neighbors, and then it becomes an uphill battle.
Absolutely. There'll be a full opportunity, once the Planning Board opens up the hearing, everybody will be notified.
Okay.
Okay, Donald, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
I gave my button machine.
A few congratulations. First of all, yesterday, I attended Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Ryan Kelly, our newest Eagle Scout, so congratulations to him. Also, congratulations to all the kids who graduated from the Youth Public Safety Academy, that's sponsored every year by Sheriff Katuji. And a couple of weeks ago, we saw all those enthusiastic kids. They come and they spend a week with the police and fire, and learn how to make themselves and their family safer. So congratulations to them. There's going to be an Eagle fundraiser this coming Saturday, August 6, at the Legion in North Chelmsford, from 11 to 2, for Owen Bussar, whose Eagle Scout project is going to be to construct a canoe launch at Varney. So anybody who's interested in helping him out with that...
Who is it for, again?
Owen Bussar, I believe is his name.
No, I don't know.
Okay.
He's a voice guy.
Yeah. The Chelmsford Military Community Covenant will be hosting a cookout for a Veteran Appreciation cookout on August 16, at the Elks, from 5 to 7. But it's not just for veterans and military, it's for anybody to come, and you can, you know, thank the veterans who show up there, and the military folks for their service. So that's August 16, at the Elks, from 5 to 7 p.m.
Free charge?
No, it is absolutely free to everybody. And one last thing, Kathy Cryan Hicks is going to be retiring at the end of this week. Friday is her last day, so the library will be hosting an open house for her from 5:30 to 7:30. They have asked the people, that anybody who's planning coming to RSVP. As you heard earlier, we did grant them a one-day beer and wine license, so they want to be able to stock up appropriately with all the refreshments. So that would be this Friday, August 5, and please RSVP if you're going to be on. That's all I have.
Okay, I just have one thing, and that's the, thank you.
Oh, I was just going to ask you if I could talk about it.
Who's going to teach us how to use it? Teach me how to use it.
Okay, you slide where it says, slide here, you slide there, and then I'll give you the passwords. I know the password.
Okay.
It's good, I used it during the meeting.
Say the secret word?
Yeah.
So you got it all down, Pat?
It's for all the...
Vivian, you need any notes?
But I own, so I, you know, I'm very familiar.
But it's offered, it's provided for all the land use boards, Conservation, Planning Board, and so forth, and we...
Didn't the Charter Committee work them?
Charter Committee was the first pilot issue as well, so it's, again, it's, we see it happen in other communities, it's a way of, again, providing additional resources.
Baseball games, football games on there too.
Way behind. Westwood's been doing it for years.
Okay, thank you. Any press questions? Anybody here in the press? No. All right, we need a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining, and strategies with relation to negotiations with non-Unit personnel, not to return to open session.
I'll second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Good night. Thank you very much. Our next meeting is the 22nd of August.